...understand how that looks. And the example to compare to that is the state of change from ACT to FAT recently. So, a lot of us understand what ACT scores mean and how that translates to what students' scholarship opportunities and things are. We want to make sure that we're fluent in what those numbers mean on FAT as well. So, that's been done. We have school safety planning meeting with our ER folks in the community. We have the chief of police and the chief of fire involved and all of our principal leaders. So, it's very important to us our school safety plan is in place. So, we have a Google Drive with our school safety plans all corralled in there with maps and an action plan should we need to take a look at that from outside of a building. So, you can access it from anywhere and the right people have access to it. It's not something that we publicly display for obvious reasons. But we do have a plan to relocate students if something were to come down. We have a plan to respond on campus if something were to come down. And then we have a plan to secure locations and do reunifications with parents at different locations if we need to take that action as well. And our best company was involved in that work. So, that was important to have done. The next thing is Adam Vogts. And Adam Vogts is, I know you-
I want to come on the list.
You're on the list.
You don't know, where's Anita yet? Can you help get that powered up? Well, she's powering that up. Oh, Chris is here. Chris is on my patient today, but his boss forgot, so she gave him an assignment. But Adam, he's come to us and what he's asked us to do is to let him lead a club for us at the high school with broadcast production. And so, he stepped forward and he's got excellent ideas. So, it's kind of a three-phase plan. It starts off as a club. Hopefully, it morphs into a class and hopefully, it morphs into a strand so that we can send kids out here that have had that experience. He talked about a mobile unit. We'll see if that's a possibility, but I think it'll gain legs. I think we'll have interviewing skills. We'll have somebody doing- right? Right? Yeah. We'll have somebody writing scripts. We'll have somebody setting up schedules. We'll have some marketing tied to it. So, it's just gonna really grow and expand. So, for that, we're gonna show a little blurb. It's on Tommy TV and we had already success with Molly Smith. Molly Smith has a really bright future. But Adam Vogts has made this happen. So, he's presented tonight with a cup and it says, "All you need is Wi-Fi." It's just a district thing here.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And just to let everybody know, if you go to YouTube and just type in Tommy TV, make sure you guys subscribe to that so that way you get all the updates as well. Any new videos that pop up?
You're watching Tommy Talk with Molly Smith on Tommy TV.
Hi, this is Molly Smith. I'm here with Tommy TV. We're gonna talk about last Friday's football game. I have Austin Herker and Camden Woodward. So, last night, it was a pretty big win for us. What do you guys think was the best part about that game?
Definitely Camden running that kick return back to her best snap.
Camden, you think that was the best part of the game?
All of us working together collectively and coming out with a win.
Teamwork, that's always the right answer. Alright, so, it was senior night for you guys. What do you guys have to say about your senior season? Are you sad about it? Are you happy to be done? What do you have to say?
I hope we all have a positive outlook on it and I hope we're all optimistic about what we can do this year. Because a lot of people, a lot of the quote-unquote stars last year graduated, so we need to bring back more power and move on. I'm just excited to play another year with my boys. I mean, we've been playing football since first grade, so just another year is just fun.
Alright, so this writer played Mohammed Seymour, right? What do you have to say to the fans, the student section, the parents? What we have to say?
They should all come out and support and make sure there's big crowd for us, for us, for them to cheer on us.
Ann, is there anything else you want to tell us?
Tornado.
Alright, thank you. I'm here with Mason Bates, who was the player of the game last Friday, and Tyler Heintzis. We're gonna ask them a couple of questions about last Friday's game to see what they're excited for in the future. So, I'll start with Tyler Saw. It was your senior night. What do you have to say about senior season?
Well, I just think that we're, it's gonna be a fun year. We're all gonna come out, have fans support us, and we're gonna do really good.
Now, Mason, you were player of the game. So, what do you think went well in the last game for us and what do you think we need to change for next time?
I think we were just aggressive and we were good on offense. We just wanted to change this and we'd be better than red zone and 25 touchdowns plus the goal line.
And Saw, I don't know if you watched the broadcast, but the announcers called you out when you caught your touchdown. They said even Heintzis looked surprised that he caught that one. Were you surprised that he scored that touchdown?
Yes, I was, when I caught it, I was really surprised. Like, it just fell right into my hands, so I was like, I was really surprised by that.
Well, it's about to count. We're glad that you did it. Yeah, it was a good day for us. This writer played Mohammed Seymour, right? What are we looking forward to? What are we, are we nervous? Are we excited?
Both, we're just hoping for the win.
For the win, alright. What do we have to say to the fans, the family, parents, students, everybody? What do we have to say to them?
Just thank you. We need all your support. We can get a part of this. Yeah, same thing.
Well, thank you guys for coming out. Anything else guys want to say?
Go tornadoes.
You were here with Mr. Johnson, the new assistant vice principal at Taylorville. So, last Friday, it was watching your first official game as a member of the THS staff. What did you think about the energy of the game and how it played?
I was very excited that we got the victory. The boys played really, really hard. You can see that we have a great crowd. Purple Rain, I think, was very excited. I think they helped the boys find a little bit of energy and pull out the victory.
Yeah, definitely. What do you think that the best play of the game was and what do you think we need to work on for the next one?
Well, definitely the kick return for a touchdown was incredibly exciting and a very opportune moment. I think that hopefully Coach Muntzer can get our defense to play a little bit better and I think we'll be able to get another victory against Long.
Yeah, Mohammed Seymour this Friday, as you just said, are we excited for that game? You think we'll have a good crowd? How do you think it's gonna go?
I think that we'll get another victory and anytime we can beat Mohammed, I think that's a good game.
Well, sure, go tornadoes. Yeah, I'm here with Mr. Hudson, our principal. So, last Friday's game, it was senior night for everybody. What do you have to say to the seniors on the team?
I'm very proud of the seniors for all the effort they've put in over the years. Fantastic game, exciting game. We got the W and we're ready for, move on for next week.
What do you think personally was the highlight of the game?
Oh, I enjoyed all of it. Obviously, the senior night presentations are always fun. I guess Cam's run back, that was pretty exciting. And the cheer of the crowd and looking across and watching, from my vantage point, watching Purple Rain, I thought that was pretty exciting. Great crowd.
That brings me to my next one. What do you think of the family, the fans, everybody, the energy? What do you think?
Oh, it was, it was high energy, obviously, because it's the first game of the year, so that's, everybody's always excited. It was a lot of fun and I hope the fans come out and bring that same energy to this week's game.
This Friday, we're playing Mohammed Seymour, another home game. What do you have to say to the boys when they get ready for this game?
Fight hard. Let's get us another W. Let's go 2-0. Work hard and fight hard and be a family, fight as a team. I'm really excited for that.
Thank you for coming out. Go tornadoes. This is Molly Smith for Tommy TV. Thank you for watching. Make sure you come out to this game next Friday and be loud as our boys take on Mohammed Seymour. And go tornadoes.
Very well done. So, there's two other things that's gonna pop up real quick. They're just still images. But on Mondays in our district, we have Movement Monday. So, we're letting a tire and wear shoes that you can move in. So, the schools are starting to get kind of funky with it and get the kids fired up. So, staff's wearing their tires, students are. This is at North School this morning. These are kindergartners and they're doing cosmic yoga. So, good morning. Mrs. Susan, you did a great job with that. It was energizing just seeing that picture. Alright, now we're in junior high. This is Movement Monday and it looks like the chicken dance.
This is what we do in staff.
So, the number one rain rule, there are 10, the number one rule is exercise. So, starting Mondays in that way and encouraging health in our staff is just a great idea. So, when you see me in my sweats on Monday, like I was earlier in the day, that's what's going on. And we encourage it for all staff members here at District Office as well. Trying to get our staff sent. I have a quarter to go before I end my diet. Thank you, Mr. Susan. Now, we can send agenda.
Alright, we're ready to go on consent agenda. We have meeting notes to go over and we have two sets. Regular board meeting on the 12th of August and then the finance meeting on the 21st. Anybody have any comments on meetings? I got one. And I don't know if Rick may have snuck out on us earlier or not, but in the very last page three there, we voted on to approve the hazardous walk areas. We only list a 6-0 vote. I'm pretty sure you were there coming for that. So, I would suggest we amend this to a 7-0 and then it's okay to go. Don't see anything else in there. I marked this one. Alright, so, in the 21st, I didn't see anything there. Anybody else? Alright. Claims. If you want to say anything about claims or stars, we're looking pretty good right now. Do you want to comment on the claims or whatever? Do you have any comments?
We have a report that we look at. It's called the gas gauge report. And we basically want to look at money in and money out and the percent of the year that we are at. So, we are currently 5% below for this time of the year. Expenses are higher, or excuse me, revenues are higher than expenses going out by about 5%. So, we're in good shape. We're at 12%. We're 17% in to this whole year, so we're pleased with that. There are some expenses, though, in the September claims and it's fairly typical. It's just expenses with getting the year started. So, just so you know, there's building trade materials, there are buildings, so things had to get ordered. Tech spots, art supplies, nurse supplies, annual renewals, a refrigerator memorial, building improvements. Mr. Steve here is gonna talk to us about that for window replacement, or excuse me, not window replacement, but for coming up with the heating, heating replacement at the junior high. So, he's gonna talk about that in a little bit. But we had some replacement of windows and some mold mitigation at junior high. And then last month, we had the dump truck that was approved, so that was in these claims. So, beyond those additional expenses, they're pretty typical of what you'd expect in September.
Questions? Alright, trigger report. If you look at where we were at last year at this time and where we are this year at this time, we're throwing somewhere just under $3.5 million ahead of where we were last year. And so, we're in good shape right now. We'll just see how things balance out. We've got some expenses coming up, but we're holding pretty tight on things, so it looks good. So, we can go to personnel unless somebody has any more comments. Got a new personnel list here?
Yeah, that's the new one. That was just all the way on.
And there's only six pages, so a lot of this is, a lot of this is just getting started first year, finding out who's gonna be taking care of our departments and all the extra team activities and that. I don't know if you have anything you want to add to this process or anybody has reviewed this and any questions?
So, in September, it's when extracurricular activities are approved for personnel. That's why you have so many pages. So, it's everything that's in our, basically in our negotiated agreement. And the other thing that you'll see on here are resignations, some adjustments, recommendation to employ, advancement on the salary schedule because of coursework, and extra assignment increments. And then the other, the extracurricular and the vocational. The extracurricular includes some mentoring, some grade level department chairs, some vocational.
You need to add that.
And those. It should be included. If it's not, it absolutely is.
Matt, who's doing our National Honor Society?
National Honor Society, Christine Rebecca, Ashley Walsh.
Okay. We'll just add those on so that everybody knows who they are. I think that pretty much covers for that. Any questions? Comment on war stories? Well, at that case, that brings us to the end of the consent agenda if someone would make a motion to approve it. Oh, alright, Chris, I forgot. We're sending people away. We want to bring people in, but we're sending people away. You have a request here from the FFA folks.
It's three-part. We have a very aggressive FFA program and because of that, there are things extended to them that perhaps aren't extended elsewhere in the state. So, they have three things that they're asking to do. One is to go to the National Chapter Program. That's the overnight. And then they're going to send a busload of kids there for the day part of it. And then they're going to be involved in a judging contest as the third part of it. Oh, it's only one letter.
Maybe a motion could improve that one?
Need a motion? Okay, all that's in the consent agenda, so we need a motion for the consent agenda. Dr. Meiser, one second.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Freeze?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Abstained.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, now, hold this. You were talking about the-
So, there's a special, yeah, there's a special board meeting on September 24th. It starts at 5:00 and we predict it runs till 8:00. During that meeting at 6:00, there will be a budget hearing. Prior to the budget hearing and after budget hearing, we're having a strategic planning session for the board. So, we'll start at 5:00 with our strategic planning. We'll break at 6:00 for budget hearing and then we'll go back into our strategic planning.
Righty. Now, policies. Has everyone read their policies? Have you made your notes? Any questions, comments? There are only 40, some, 43 pages. I'm sure that you made it through night at a time.
So, we subscribe to press policy and the state attorneys write the updates for our policy that we are, so we're current with law. And there were quite a few that came out of the July 1st implementation date. So, that's why there's so many policy updates. It just brings us to compliance.
I have a question on the board qualification and I saw where they changed different things around. But what I didn't see was any addressing in that policy as far as convicted felon. Is that covered in any of the policies? Because by Illinois law, unless, if you're a convicted felon, unless you're in jail, you can vote. And part of the requirement to be on voting is the sure register board. So, I don't know if you want to check into that or not. Make sure.
Yeah, we can look at that policy more clearly. I would think there's a way, there's a way to, you know, vet candidates so that you have positive people available.
Because we subscribe to this, doesn't mean we can't.
You can make modifications, absolutely, yeah.
The other question I had is if you look at the guidance for board member communications, and we've talked about this separately a few times. You can send out a blast email or a text if you preference that with do not respond.
To all.
To all. My suggestion, just for a good practice, is if you have something that you want to share with people, send it out individually so that if anybody responds to you, they don't hit the wrong button, respond to everybody, and then you have an issue with open meeting facts. So, just try to keep that in mind. Most of us know that, but it's just better to reinstated everything. Anybody got any other, any questions or comments on the policies? Well, we would need a motion to adopt something. Let's see. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Oh, yes. As you know, we did the window replacements at the junior high this year. We did the west side and the north side over there. And when we were doing the north side and got those windows out, we noticed there was a great deal of leakage in that area. And there was wood floor in there with the dressing mats on top of it and underneath that was just dark matter growing. And so, we had the abaters come in and seal that area off, do an abatement, remove all the wood, remove all the mold, and then do their 24-hour sampling. And it was clear so that it was safe to re-enter. And now, we've decided that we're gonna go ahead and get some tile in there on that floor so at least have tile on the floor, not just the exposed concrete. So, that is what this replacement of the floor tiling is, and it's just under $7,000. $6.99, 5.44. So, that is something we want to move forward with. I think we have the money in the budget. So, it's just really, it's not so much for you to make a motion on this or approve it or anything. It's just to let you know what we're doing over there if anybody's asking what happened with that room. There we are.
You'd like me to address the use of the room? So, the room was the old, years ago, it was the old wood shop at the Taylorville Junior High. Of course, they haven't had that wood shop program for years. Several years ago, the wrestling program took this over and they put a wood floor in there amongst themselves, which was kind of a no-no. It created a non-moisture barrier in there and that constant floor being covered like that, waked up into the wood, that's where we got the dark matter. Plus, we had some waking windows. So, the use of the room is greatly needed for the junior high to have a fifth-grade indoor PE area when the weather is inclement for recess as well. So, that's, that will be the intended use of the room. It's, well, it's probably the size of three classrooms combined, so they can utilize that in many different ways. So, Chris Westrick and I, in fact, today, just got the floor completely prepped to save money. For the floor company wouldn't have any extra expenses, so we've got the floor all filled in, all the pipes removed and all that, so it's ready now for them to put the tile down.
And that will help us to a little of our tight space over there during inclement weather and stuff. It's a good use for the room. And I want to compliment the staff on everything. You guys jumped on that problem right away. You recognized what it was and took care of it. It kept everybody safe and it didn't delay the start of school or anything else. No problems, so thank you very much for that. Okay, now, we have, oh, we also have, we're like everybody else, our appliances break down. So, we've had a little problem at the junior high to replace a non-functioning double oven over there. And so, just to let you know, we're getting that replaced, a little O and M project. But the next one that's coming up is a little bit more involved. And that is we have heating units on top of the cafeteria area. One of those has failed. The other one probably isn't going to be that far behind. If we're gonna do a pick, we might as well pick two at one time and get this done without going up, doing one thing, then having to come back later and do another one in the middle of the winter. So, we made the decision to go ahead. It's $102,418. What's our schedule of actually getting that one?
We, Emery, they went ahead and ordered, taking into consideration the work they've done with this in the past, so it's very trustworthy. So, they do have the equipment on order. And it is to be done before we get into that, probably December. One unit will probably keep, well, I know it will keep up until we get down to sub-zero temperatures and they've got that online to get done before that happens. So, probably looking at, probably looking at sometime in November for that process. Once we get everything back to them, he can give me the timeline on that and I can share that with you guys. But one unit has the heat exchanger completely gone, so it is inoperable for heating. We're still using it a little bit for cooling, but we cannot operate it all for heating.
Hey, you're on a roll. You might as well tell them about the walk-in freezer.
Okay, so the walk-in freezer at the junior high, we're working on some prices on that. We're trying to get some different labor cost down on it. But the freezer unit at, it's all Y, was built in place. And what they generally are, there are two panels that are six inches apart for the walls, six-inch floor, six-inch ceiling with styrofoam insulation. Over the years, there has got leakage in between, so then we create moisture in between the two areas. And of course, we're working with the freezer, so that freezes. So, in between the two panels now has an iceberg in it, so to say, and has pushed the walls out on the freezer unit close to an inch. And you can see that measured, we've been measuring that for a couple of years now, watching that. So, it's gotten to the point where it's gonna have to be done. So, Megan from Amermark has been working with us to get some pricing. And right now, we're kind of going back and forth on two companies on the labor and installation to see if we can get a kind of a better deal right now on that. That's something that, you know, I hope, I don't know if it can happen through the Christmas break. Hopefully, if not, we can plug it along and do it for sure next thing, summer, because it's a, it's a complete- Because it's a, it's a complete removal of that unit, so they would have to be completely down, uh, and, you know, stripped out. The only thing that we would have to do ourselves is probably some floor leveling, because the, the older ones were recessed in the floor. So, we'll probably have to bring that concrete level up to the, the current surface of the inside of the kitchen.
I asked the kitchen lady to bring me better news, and she said, "Well, there are more kids eating, so our revenues are up." Okay.
So, there you have it.
Okay.
But if you think about the vintage of the buildings and things like these, these are, you know, these are just things that come along and happen, and, and usually it's in threes, not fives and sixes, but it's the way it goes.
And we're thinking that that was a nineteen-seventy-ish built, uh, of walk-in thing, so it's definitely done its time.
And the replacement cost? Twenty-two to twenty-five thousand dollars is the estimated cost, because it's a custom-built onsite project. And it's a dual, it's a fridge-freezer combo.
Yes, yes.
And then, the next item is, and thank you for doing the plumbing work on getting the sprinkler system back. When we, yes, when we had the, uh, when we had the field put in, uh, there were some lines cut. Some Julie things maybe didn't get taken care of, and it doesn't matter, it's A, B, C, A, I don't know, B, I don't care, we gotta get water. So, they wound up, uh, we got bid on materials, and our in-house plumber has set everything up. So, this also, we, where I think we're set up now, we don't have to string a hose across the track yet?
Yes.
Okay. We have a big water station. If you've been to the game, you see it for the players. We had run a hose across the track until this water thing got set, and, uh, we had other things we had to do and things. So, that's all set now, everybody should be happy, uh, for a while, so that's taken care of. But we saved a lot of money there because of, of our in-house plumber, so thank you. And, tell them about the bleachers.
Yeah. Bleachers?
Yes. You guys are taking a look at me from here.
Basically...
We need to re-address that. Uh, we do have, uh, we do have room, uh, for an additional pad to be placed on the north end of what's already there now. So, um, I mean, I would probably, I would definitely have to revisit that, because that's been a long time since we got those prices. So, I'm sure there's been, uh, material increases in that.
Sure, material went up, it's a lot of them.
Yeah.
Uh, just a little back history on this. When we did all the field changes, we moved the field, centered field up, so we'd have more, better room on each side for the team. Uh, that meant we'd get rid of the sand pits and that stuff. It also meant that we ran a, uh, an asphalt route there, so we just had them go ahead and put a ADA accessible path in there, all the way over to the old bleachers and that. We put a new stairwell on the press building, and that's because if we tore that press building down, then we have to meet all the new laws, which meant we'd have to put in elevators. And, and that was more expense than we cared to go through at that time, and it was working, so we didn't want to fix it. Uh, but at the same time, we had to watch the money, so we had only so much money to put the bleachers in, and I don't know, how many seats do we supposedly have available on bleachers?
Yep, close, one, close to one ninety on the inside.
Yeah, and, but we had more room there, so we could add to that. We did some things, and we thought later on, we'll look at that project as we've got a little bit more money to add some more bleachers. So, that's what we're really gonna have to do, is, is relook at that, and then, you know, they'll, they've got several things that they'll have to give back to the building committee on, we'll talk about, and then we'll go forward from that. But that's basically, that's basically the old business stuff.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? All right, we're off to new business. Tell us about our enrollment.
We are at about twenty-five hundred students, a hundred and fifty of them are pre-K students. And we're watching the enrollment, it's pretty steady. We've had a little bit of fluctuation before and after the holiday, but nothing substantial.
Now, we compared to last year.
Pretty steady.
And we're all taken care of on Chromebooks and everything now? For all that's, okay. So, most of the forecasted numbers that we came up with holding real close.
That operation in the Pepsi building looks like Santa's workshop. It, it is, it is, it is quite an operation. They've got cabinets set up, and they've got A, B, Cs, and numbered, and it's quite industrious.
All right, um, well, the next thing is, uh, Stonington Park District got back to us with a couple of proposals. You've all had those emailed to you, and they were in your packets. The letter that came from the attorney was attached, so I'd just like to go around the table and get each board member's consensus on how they feel about the option. Well, let me explain, everybody. Option A that they gave us, sent us back, is that the Stonington Board would, uh, they would pay for a survey to split the land away from the building. They would want the land, uh, and then we would retain the building and then try to dispose of that somehow, either bid process or not. Uh, that would take a, advance the closing date for the end of that to the end of October. Option B was that, uh, they would take property as originally offered to them, uh, with us extending the closing date to be honored before the end of this month, end of September. What they ask in there basically was that, as far as the library is concerned, um, they, you know, we have concerns that we're paying for utilities. They said, "Well, we'll take over the utilities." And Wendy called them to, from the lawyer, to get a definition of what utilities is, it's kind of vague. So, we want to know what utilities are you talking about? And I think they said, what, gas, water, waste?
And electric.
And electric. So, they would take over those. They asked then that we would commit to taking care of anything else, the library, our commitment in the lease agreement, for six months after the closing, closing date, which basically is, we supply them with consumables. And, uh, you know, we can calculate what that is and figure out what you want to do. But I'm more interested in each individual member's opinion of the two options and what you're capable of. So, Trish, we'll put you right on the spot first.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
I, that's one clock, like, you know, I love to hear.
Um, I'm not in favor of option A, because I don't think there's any, um, we won't have any value once the land is gone. So, my, my take would be we go with B. But we need to really, I am concerned, because I really want to understand and make sure we understand what that utilities means, what we're, what we're agreed to in the contract.
Okay.
Before I find anything.
All right. And Sarah?
Hi, I'm here. What she thinks, um, I think keeping it together is the only better option, and just knowing exactly what we're getting into for option B.
So, a bulleted list?
Sorry.
Of, like, a bulleted list of U.T.s?
Yes.
Needs, 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 yeah, out.
The, the language is just a little fuzzy that they added to that paragraph, and I think if we bullet that out and say, okay, this is and this, it defines it, and everybody knows what they're responsible for. Uh, Fries?
Well, I'm obviously against option A or two. I don't think that everyone split the land off from the building. But anyway, uh, the second, and my understanding is that the library, we're gonna give them a six-month lease now, is that correct?
That is an option. In the lease agreement with the library, we have a, we have an out. We have a six months, we could enact a six-month vacate notice if we wish to. We said, we think, we just want to issue that now, because we want to get that clock started. That's something we could do, and then we would have to negotiate, basically in this agreement, decide whether we were going to supply consumables for six months. I guess the way I would, if you were gonna do that, you'd have to step back and say, okay, we're sending a letter to give you a six-month vacate notice. At the same time, we're saying to the Stonington Park Board, we'll pick an option, and we give it to them. And we say that, as far as supplying consumables to the library board, we've committed to do that for six months, because we gave them a vacate notice. So, at the time of closing, if there's five months left, we'll do that for five, we'll give them five months for the consumables, if it's whatever that time is, but it's upon that, calculated back, uh, to that date we give notice. That'd be my understanding, but, so.
Okay, that, that was my big concern, I had to make sure that that was clear.
Dr. Mizrahi?
Yeah, I agree. A is not an option. B is with the modification. And if we can come to some agreement there, I think we're fine, if we can, then we're back to square one.
Like you say, that's the other thing, is, uh, with the timing schedules, understand the Stonington Board, the Park District meets next Monday. So, if we send our, this amended, whichever way we go with this, get our consensus, we send it back. Uh, my suggestion would, we would say that we tentatively, tentatively approve this. We don't vote on it tonight, we tentatively approve that proposal, send it back. If they vote and accept it on the sixteenth, then it would be on our twenty-fourth agenda. Okay, we can add that to the agenda along with the budget hearing, along with, uh, the strategy stuff. At that time, we could adopt that. It is also my understanding that the title work, the search work, is supposed to be done this week. And if that occurs, then it's just a matter of, once they approve that, uh, and we get the resolution back, review it, and we approve it, then we would request a closing date, get that information from Spurlings, who's doing the title search, to the lawyers to draw up the quitclaim. And then, we'd set a closing date, and they would get the deed, and at that point, we should be, we should be out of it.
Agreed.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
Uh, B is the only option. I mean, the building is worthless. I would want the six-month vacate notice as part of the motion we made. And, um, I came into this late, so if I'm wrong, correct me, but I think we also ought to put a contingency to sell it, unless we have another interested party in it.
Well, I guess...
If it's worth it, go through it for something.
If, if we, say for instance, that it looks like we're going with B and a modification, which B says that we'll close by the end of the month. I'm assuming if we don't come to an agreement and get it passed and close by the end of the month, then there is nothing more to talk about. That means that we are, we put together a bid package explaining, uh, that we have a leaser in there, and their drop dead date, if you will, or vacation date, or vacate date, and such and such, and that you have to honor that. And that, you know, we'll supply the, we can throw in the consumable, that's okay, but we don't do utilities. And then we put it up for bid, that'd take another thirty days. So, that would push us towards October first of Nov- November. And then, uh, but if we start the clock ticking now, uh, we're, you know, we're obligated until closing to take care of, of expenses, and after that point, we just give you whatever consumables is left over and go from there. That's, would be my understanding.
Yeah, I just, I just want to put the contingency in there, just to be picked up, and then we're another month behind. And then another thirty-day dating cycle, and it's the first of the year before we get on.
Okay. There's one other thing I, I guess we should explain too. One of the other things that happened to the, and if you look at both of these options that they put, their attorney removed the library's signature and, and the witness seen part from that. And, and it, once he explained it, it made perfect sense. If you had an apartment building, and you were selling your apartment building, and you had lease agreements with the renters, you wouldn't go to the renters and ask them to be signatory to the sale. Their leases are their leases, they're part of the sale, and after that point, it's their renegotiation. So, you wouldn't ask for that, so it doesn't make any sense for us to do that here with the leaser.
A lease agreement always runs with the...
All right, Mr. Driscoll?
I think B is the only option. I think one of the things that the Stonington Park District, I don't know what they're thinking, but to me, what everybody else sees, is the library is costing them to have a little cold feet, they don't know how they can deal with that or the money. I think if we get rid of the library out of the whole equation, then they would accept B and with the utilities and stuff to support the library. The one thing I think we do have to do tonight is to make the motion to, uh, to the library board to give them notice to vacate six months for today's date. And that starts the whole process, even if the Park District falls through, that way we're clean sooner. We probably should have done this two, three months ago. Hindsight's always better.
Hindsight's always twenty, twenty.
And, and there, and to keep the line prepared, there, that's fair for the library to go to the Park District and come up with an agreement.
Yes.
We're not trying to say the library has to go, we're just trying to make the deal go through with the Park Districts, and they would accept.
All right, so we heard everybody's opinions. Anybody got anything else to add? We can basically work on, on the verbiage, I think, that you wrote some verbiage up the other day that I think covers everybody's concerns about defining utilities, and then we'll work out some verbiage on the, uh...
Yeah, the utilities, just need to...
Yeah, just bullet those out.
Gas, electric.
There's gas, electric, water that we get from the village, uh, there's Shelby electric, and, uh, and then it's waste hole, however they want to do the waste. There's not that much waste right now that you couldn't sack it up and throw it in the Park District bin, as far as that goes. But that, we just need that. If I think it's cleaner, if that's defined, and everybody knows exactly what their responsibilities are. So, uh, with that, a lot of stuff out there, who wants to, anybody got a motion they want to make?
Steve Smith? Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes.
Are the electric and water net metered specifically for the library, so that it's not containing the whole complex? I know there's nothing going on in the rest of it, but to make your guys' decision a lot easier on what the exact cost is, if it's metered specifically for them, you'll know exactly what the cost is.
I don't know that it is metered specifically.
No, no, the meter, that built, the whole building is metered.
Because they were talking about putting it on a separate meter, I didn't know if they ever did or not.
Yeah, no, the whole B building, and they, they, uh, the village supplies the, the gas and the water, and then, and, uh, Shelby is the electric, but no, the way, the way it's wired right now, it's something, it could be done, but things would have to be done differently to separate that portion of the building electrically.
Okay.
No, just one meter for everything.
But for Jim, for your question though too, I think that you said it right, the rest of the building is minimal usage. Almost all the usage is gonna be the library, so it's not, it's not worth, I don't think it's worth the expense to remeter things this whole time.
No, but in, if the, if the library decides to stay, then they'll...
Yeah, they're gonna have to remeter, and that's gonna be, that's gonna be a separate after...
And I, and I think that's where the real thing is, everybody's trying to figure out, you know, this, there's no free lunch. And so, they know there's gonna be some expense, they're trying to figure out who can do what, and if they're gonna have to ask people for money or referendums or whatever. But, uh, you know, we just want to convey the property to them and let them put it to use, and if they can, that's fine. But we have a, you know, we need to get out of that arrangement. Uh, I, I will tell you, we have reduced costs over there, uh, to about a third of what it was last, last claim, last year's claims at this time, uh, was forty-two hundred or somewhere in that area, forty, and we're at about fifteen hundred right now, because we're not using as much electricity, we're not using as much...
That's one air handler running right now, and basically the water usage...
So, we have seen a reduction in cost, and, uh, that, that, that's been good for our O and M. But we need a date specific, and I agree. So, anybody?
I'd like to make a motion to notify the Stonington Library Board, they have six months to vacate.
All right. That's, so that's in our lease agreement, that's separate from this, so, uh... We can do that on a roll call, we can do that on a voice vote, it's not a money issue, but I think probably we should do it on a roll call. If that's all right to everybody?
A second, somebody second it?
Nobody's seconded.
Oh, nobody's seconded it, or dies it, then you get a second.
George, you second?
All right. So, it's just my feeling, we can do it on a voice vote, or we can do it on a roll call. I just feel we ought to do a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Mizrahi?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, so now, it's proposals. Uh, the gist I got here was that we want to go with B with modification, to specify what utilities, what defines utilities, and...
Well, I think that whole four, whole number four needs to be reviewed on this.
And, uh...
I like the way they...
Yeah, I think we can just do that, and, and we'll put the language in there for them that we will, uh, we've given our six-month notice, we'll make sure that we take care of, of our obligations on consumables for the six months. That's basically what we're doing right now. Uh, and that, and we will take care of, obviously, we'll take care of the electricity and everything else until a point of closure, and at that closure date, if we come to an agreement and get the... and get the quit claim deal over there, then we're, we're out of it. We give them the supplies for the remaining months, and we're free and clear out of the process. Is that fair?
Yep.
All right, so I guess Wendy and I will look on that verbiage. And then we will get this over to the Park Board, and we'll draft a letter of notification to the library board.
So we need a motion.
So we need a motion. We need a motion to go with option B modified.
Option.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanhuss?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
All right, set it off. Comments? Yes.
I just wanna let everyone know, too, that we're not trying to get rid of the library, the library needs to work with the Park District, if the Park District accepts this offer, and if the Park District refuses it, they're gonna have to work with the new owners of the building after they take off the bid. We're hoping everything works out for the best this way.
The next item is paperwork from the bank, insuring dollars that flow through, so the limit's been increased, and the former superintendent's name's been removed and mine's been added, so Peoples Bank, they have to go out to an underwriter, because the dollars that flow through are higher than what's federally insured, so our limit's been increased, and my name's been added to it, so it's just signatory on the board, and then option on that.
So we need a motion, we need a motion to adopt this, right? All right. So, Mr. Meiser, second. Mr. Driscoll?
Uh, Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanhuss?
Yes.
Here. Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Turned around.
We'll have a signing party after the meeting. Okay. I eat my own sharpie, oh, never mind. So now we're ready for the financial committee report.
I know it wasn't there, somebody's gonna have to-
Ah!
So the tenant's budget was discussed and placed on public view for the thirty days to meet statutory requirements, and the financial committee?
Yeah, that's basically what we did, is that we went through the, the budget, we walked through it, and then brought it to public, is what we decided that night to take it public, and then we have to give up the thirty-day wait period. We didn't do anything other than that.
And they voted, put it on, and there it is, and we'll be done the twenty-fourth. All right. Hey, superintendent's talk. Superintendent?
So it's the start of September, just so you know, I've been meeting and networking with our employees, parents, some students, hopefully more, it's nice to see ten of you here tonight, thank you for taking valuable time out of your lives on a Monday evening, we appreciate you being there. You're the reason we do our work, so it's really nice to see you. I'm meeting some community members and participating in some regional superintendent work. As I said, we hosted Annie Minar on Friday here in the boardroom, and Anita had a black tie, it was so impressive, that we took some pictures and sent those out, so she did a beautiful job. It was a very respectful climate, and everybody was really happy to be here in Tellerville. We are reviewing bond and repayment cycle and studying the market, there's possibility of doing some refunding on bonds to capture a lower interest rate, and to take a look at the, there's four bonds that'll be coming off cycle, and taking a look at what the district needs are through that strategic planning process. So we're looking at rates, and we're shopping the market for that. They, they don't like when you do that, so I've met with all of them, and, I know, it's been, it's, it's been a good process. And then our school safety planning, which is just really important to the work that we do. The, there's a school board division meeting for the Abe Lincoln Division, of which we're in, and our own Stephen Turner will be receiving a master board member recognition-
For you.
During it. It's a fall meeting coming up, if you'd like to attend, you're more than welcome to go. I would be honored to go, and hopefully you'll attend to get your reward.
I, you know, I could go with the option, just now I've been rid of that, not as much.
Do you usually-
It's the pick on which, I gotta look at those two menus, see which one looks a little fat, but I don't have any.
Do you usually make, does the board try to go to the, there's usually a fall and a spring meeting of local school board association?
We used to go a lot of them.
Okay. So that would be phenomenal, if you guys would be interested in knowing. Our mid-state special education dissolution update. We met and conducted an autopsy on the financials of the former Christian County Region of Mid-State Co-op, and it was clear there were some financial obligations that were not met back in 2015, therefore a lingering cost remains for our region, and then a portion of that to our district. We have an invoice that will be paid once accounts are ready to be cleared, and it's in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars, and then a portion of that gets rebated back to us when state dollars flow, so I think we're looking at a net bill of about thirty-two thousand dollars. The director of the co-op worked with the districts and met final payroll obligations to all three districts that left the cooperative. As you recall, that was on the line last month. And district superintendents worked with the attorneys and the union to gain clarity on the legal and ethical obligations. So we were pleased that they finally decided to agree to meet their obligation. So there's your update on that. The district submitted the ESSA grant, and our quality framework, and our district improvement plan, and school improvement plans. Each district is required to select a learning partner through the grant, we selected AIR, and they are known, it's the same partner the district used for last year, they are known for their district leadership improvement efforts and their use of data. So we, we put them to work, I'm pretty happy that, because we're forced to have the help, we're using it to the best of our ability. That was a little bit of a surprise to him, he wasn't sure he's gonna have to work so hard, but he, he's agreed to do that after a couple of meetings. Legal updates, I sent out a listing of the bills for you, the updates from the governor's signature, so you can take a look at those, and we'll start implementing those and reviewing policy with staff, so that we're in compliance. Our school board conference is coming up, we have reservation for our entire board at, through Don, through Don Burton, a Tellerville individual, Don Burton, and he is representing Petco Construction, and it's at Gibson Steakhouse. And then we have open house style lunch through Amoresco at the Home, that's in the basement of the Swiss, and I will give an autograph to all of you, that's an open luncheon for both days, Friday and Saturday of the convention. So those are three meals, and offers are still coming in. What I thought we would do beyond that, if you guys are in agreement, is I held the offers out there, and you can kinda divide and conquer, and just see where you wanna go as individuals, or if you wanna team up or smaller groups. So I'm pretty happy to get Gibson, so I thought that was, that was a really good opportunity for us. The train schedule is here, and if you want reservations made, Dr. Meiser selected some. Thursday, the hotel reservations begin, so we'll go up on the train.